I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Candyler?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Webber?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Council Fucy?
Here.
Council Hoxton?
Here.
Council Rose?
Here.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. This is September 2, 2014, WPCA Town Council meeting.
I have the following corrections. On page six, item C, the motion should read that the appointment is to the EDC as an alternate. And then on page, uh, page nine, third paragraph from the bottom, on the citizen's statements, it should be Ron Sienna instead of Scanlon. It's S-I-E-N-A. Those are my corrections.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Webber, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candyler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Webber?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hoxton?
Yes.
Special Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item three, correspondence, citizen's statements. Unfinished business. There'll be a public hearing, which won't start until 7:30. Item five, new business. A fiscal year 2014-2015 sewer works, operation budget, capital budget, and user fee. Item I.
I think that also...
Yeah. Go to item six, citizen's statements and petitions. Regular Town Council meeting. Reports of boards, commissions, Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, I can report on that. It was a very good meeting and very productive. Alan Flatys and Andre Harwell were in to meet with the commission, talked about their concepts, and copies are in your folder. It's three pages. And this is what they are starting with in terms of page one, and I apologize, the box down in the right, you can barely see and read, but essentially, they've gone through three different concepts. The first one, to look at the site as is and trying to get a development in a box on there, mixed-use, retail, commercial, residential. And the first one in this scheme is just simply commercial, using the site as is. And that comes to about 40,000 square feet, given the current regulations and different requirements that we have for that site. That's pushing the envelope, and that's basically all you can get on that site. Second, they went through, trying to incorporate the green component or open space component, if you will, with some walking areas and park bike areas. And again, these are just rough kind of schematic sketches concept, again, throwing in retail and commercial. And in this case, we have a capacity for 24,000 in terms of commercial, and then about 11 residential dwelling units, one bedrooms, basically studio type in that scenario. Page three, the final page, and the third concept takes that a bit further and expands the concept and the idea spilling over into the adjacent property, looking at possibility that a developer may take this route to look at assembling a piece next to it or a budding. This also includes green area, open space, and prominently features the reuse of the old school house in the back on the hill. And so this is probably the first look at it in this scenario, or the last scenario. The third one, you come up with about 17,000 commercial, 17,000 square feet of commercial with about 13 dwelling units. So the next step, the commission felt was best to take this down to two representatives who made contact with that meeting tomorrow morning with DOT, because they identified the issues, our access to the site, and getting traffic flow off of 80 and 139 are the major issues. So commission felt that it would be a good idea, and contacts would be at DOT level, and this basic conceptual standpoint in time, to take a look at any red flags that are raised and see, what can we do? What do you see as problematic? So hoping to gather a lot of information from that meeting tomorrow, and then report back for their next meeting in October. They're also planning an extra rep for November 1st, which is a Saturday. Here in the same shred we had last time at MBIS, I don't think, to get the local input and dialogue as to where these concepts are heading. So I think overall, I can report that, you know, the commission is energized, and they're excited about moving this along. They've got dates, so they see it as gathering more information from meetings like DOT, talking with other knowledgeable sources about development, and pushing forward with the final report and potentially an RFP sometime December, January timeframe.
Hey, Bob. I just, just to ask a question, Mike. I know the last time we had that workshop with the Economic Development Commission here, I thought we talked about one of the proposals was going to be changing the whole property, leveling that out and getting rid of all of the buildings, and I noticed that all of the, they all contain still the old school house or the police department building. Is that, that...
Well, the first one doesn't.
The first one doesn't?
The first one doesn't. That's...
What is that, A?
I think they're just, they're just kind of sketching out a, a, um, large block building.
Okay. That's not, I thought, it just looks like it's the same building. I thought they're showing the existing...
I think that, yeah, they're showing, they're showing it, yeah, but it would, in this scenario, everything, like you said, would be sort of like, this is...
That's the first page?
Yeah, right. And that's really, I don't think anybody in this process looked at and said, gee, that's, that's what we want, or the commission, but that's sort of like the worst-case scenario. You just, you level everything, you put it in, and you get one little box, I mean, not one little, but a small, 40,000 is your max, and you look at the entrance off of 80 and trying to get everything in and out. Could it work? Yeah, that's what, that could work. We're hoping to go beyond that.
Think any, any plan's going to have to have the nacho road option.
Right, and that's...
You know?
I think you're right.
Michael, for reference, what would a 40,000 square foot box store be? Like, what type of store is that?
I think you can talk about like a, like a Walgreens or a type of pharmacy, larger, you know, pharmacy type. I don't know what else. I can't recall what else, maybe Deputy Mayor remembers.
Rite Aid, nineteen ninety-one.
Rite Aid, yeah, or a Walt, something like that.
Forty thousand square feet.
Pretty big town down there now.
Right, yeah, I think that's...
One in Northridge, but...
Just to give sort of a reference point.
I think forty thousand square feet is bigger than a, I think it's a little bit bigger than a CVS or a Rite Aid. Yeah. Is that, is that what they're saying? The building is 40,000 square?
Yeah.
Maybe right.
I think those are like 20, 25.
Maybe they're pretty big.
Big, right, all right.
But that's not...
All right, I have a big permanent project building committee.
Permanent project met last week, and as far as the STW Community Center goes, it is paved, it is striped. The lighting should be done in the next week or two, I believe.
Scheduled for next week.
Scheduled for next week, okay. So the light, the light poles should be going up, and the lighting should be done at that time. I just have one question, and Franny, you can probably answer this. Last night at Park Rec, they talked about the new bathroom that we installed there and an issue with the toilet, and that it's, you know, like, they can't use it, or it's very limited use. Can you just address that and tell us what the problem is?
Well, we don't exactly what the problem is, but I think there's a couple things. We installed a efficient...
Low-flow?
Low-flow toilet with air assist. And so what we did was, we bought a new toilet with a lot more water. But I think the problem was, the building was shut down for, I think, four years now? So it was our four years. So the pipe that we cut into is a cast iron pipe again, and I believe that the stuff was getting stuck on it, and it was, you know, dry, rusted a little bit. So we already twice, uh, pulled a root today. It is hooked up to the sewer, so you got a feeling it wasn't what it is.
That's a good news.
That's a good news. So today, we did it all over again, and we installed a new toilet, so it is functional at this point. It needs to be tested, but...
Okay, and the toilet that you took out is going to the concession stand, I think?
They're going to use that at the concession stand at the high school, because they need a assist down there, with their, with that situation.
Okay, all right. So that takes care of that issue, hopefully. As far as the high school roof project, when Bill comes, will that bill...
Bill's actually not coming.
Oh.
He sent the B team tonight.
The B team, okay, all right. So that project is basically complete. They were just waiting, in the report, they were just waiting for warranties and everything else to come in for the building committee to be able to finalize and close out that project, which he thought the latest that they'd be able to do that would be November, that that project would be completely closed out. All the ventilators were on, operational. In the rainstorms, it was a dry, so that's a good thing. The building remained dry, so that was a good test during the rainstorms. As far as the auditorium goes, Larry Secor was at the meeting and gave, they have done some preliminary assessments, and he gave a report as to some of the things that will be done. Basic things that will be done right now are caulking around the windows and the doors. Over time, that wears down, breaks down, so that's going to be done. And they're also going to do test water, I guess it's the water level, over a year's time period, so they get the highs and the lows, so that they can see once. And I, he said that was something that Franny could do. I don't know if anyone has talked to Franny about that yet, but that was his report. He said it was something rather simple, putting tubes into the ground and taking measurements twice a month. So I don't know exactly where that stands. Fran, do you know anything about that yet?
I don't.
You didn't get the memo on that yet?
I got the memo, and I can update it now.
Ah, okay.
And we are proceeding with the caulking and the ceiling as a maintenance item, because that's really, it makes, I mean, that's what it should be.
Okay, okay. And another issue that has, or discussion that was had in regards to the Stanley T project, since the parking lot is now done and all the striping is done, is parking, and so much like designated parking. And so at this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add item, let's see here, 13H, STW Community Center parking. And then we can discuss it later and take a vote on it. So I'd like to make the motion to amend the agenda to add that item.
Second. Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candyler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Webber?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hoxton?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
That's all I have on permanent project. When you get to that item, there is a map in your folder. I mean, yeah, layout of the parking lot.
All right, DOE, we need another motion? I thought the last time you were saying we had a motion to amend the agenda, and we need one to add that to it.
Right, you just voted to amend the agenda permission.
Right, so make a motion to add your H to it.
Didn't that motion do it all in one? To amend the agenda, to add that item?
Last, last time, we were doing it this way.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Is that the right way to do it?
Yes.
So in other words, maybe somebody wouldn't want to amend the agenda, I guess.
Yeah.
So that's why we vote on amending the agenda, and now we're voting on what you're putting on.
Correct.
I like the all-in-one, but, you know, we're here.
Thanks for sticking up for me.
Moved by Councilor Rose, seconded by Councilor Hoxton. Roll call.
Mayor Candyler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Webber?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hoxton?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
BOE Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
That committee met last week also. We talked about the school security grant, which was due on, yesterday, on the 15th. And Scott had told us that they had it pretty much done, they were just going to be reviewing it with people and have it submitted on time by Monday. And they were in the neighborhood of about $142,000 for the grant. And we also talked about the school projects, the bathroom and the track. The bathrooms, they're going to do two ADA bathrooms, and they're going to make sure that all of the bathrooms are functional based on the amount of money that was originally allocated in our capital project. They may not get all the bathrooms done this year, and they'll, at this point in time, they were waiting for more numbers, but they're working within that budget. And if they see that they need to go beyond that, then they'll come back to the council for that. And the track issue, we talked about when Bill had told us about the two bids that they had were higher than what we had. The Board of Ed actually had a special meeting last week and approved it, and so that's on our agenda tonight with the additional funding. So they've moved that along so that we can fit it within the timeframe of the contractor. And we canceled the meeting for October, because it fell on a holiday, so we were just going to keep the next meeting for November then.
Update on school projects. Bill showed he's not here tonight, because we actually met a few times, and I've given the updates, so I think we're pretty much...
And then if I add, because it's sort of related to building projects, is we did submit the grant last Friday, and we did give confirmation that they had received the on-chronic copies, so...
Okay. If I might, I went to the fire commission meeting, and, you know, they spoke about fire hydrant inspection, like, on private property. There's quite a few fire hydrants that are on private property, and, you know, should the owners of the property be getting them inspected? Who's inspecting them? Which is very important, because you don't want, you know, them showing up and a fire hydrant is frozen or not working.
What are they doing other towns in that? As far as that goes, do you know?
I think the fire marshal, if I'm not mistaken, looks at the fire hydrants.
And it's kind of a double-edged sword here. We pay the regional water authority for the maintenance of hydrants. In some communities, the fire department actually owns and maintains those hydrants.
Okay.
So they would be responsible for it. Here, because they're a private hydrant, RWA does not maintain them, so there's...
Up to the owner of the property?
Yeah, exactly, and that was our discussion.
There's quite, there's quite a few. I don't know what the number was.
How many hydrants like that?
I'm, sorry, John?
How many hydrants are there like that?
In total, there's probably less than a dozen and a half.
And then another, just one other quickish...
Is there any reason why, by way of condemnation, taking easement for those hydrants? They're private, they're, they're like on a, on a site.
Like, we have one, you know, at the sports club, and, you know, I don't know how many times...
A lot of times, when you work, you know, I work on them, and bigger companies have like a maintenance program in place, but some of the smaller companies might decide to just, they install it, and then it's just forgotten about, you know? I don't know. That's why I was asking what they did in other towns as far as enforcing, you know, maintenance on those. I'm not really sure. But it should be up to the owner, their hydrants.
This is a matter of public safety, and is, there a downside? Well, other than the cost, is there a downside to us taking control of those hydrants and making sure that they're properly maintained periodically?
We don't control the hydrants in town, RWA does. And that would have to be from the property owner to RWA, I'm sure there would be an associate cost.
And then there was another brief discussion, you know, last year, due to the spending freeze, and I'm sure this occurred elsewhere too, but, you know, they went into their budget year, and they had a certain amount of money and certain amount of things needed. And now they're kind of lost 26 or almost $30,000 of revenue that they really needed to buy supplies, so, you know, just keeping that in mind going into the budget season. It's kind of a tough thing.
She can ask one question about the hydrants that are privately owned. Does anybody check them to see if they work or anything?
Not, no.
No, I, I...
It's, I'll tell you where this came about. We did some training at the 654 Foxen Road site, that's at the school complex, and in the process of that training, we observed that two fire hydrants that are on that footprint had no water. So the next day I went out there, we worked at the town engineer, worked with BERT, we contacted the person that was responsible for the mechanicals, it went on to the plumber, who actually was responsible for making sure that those hydrants were turned on when the project was completed. We never really got a straight answer. The bottom line is that we did get water supply to those hydrants. However, we don't know how long those hydrants were not turned on. And the other situation that kind of compromised everything is that the street valve was a reversed-threaded street valve. So instead of it opening in the normal way, it was reversed. So as of right now, the hydrants are open, and through BERT and concert with the responsible party, we've asked them to provide us with a flow test from those two hydrants.
Thank you.
All right, it's 7:30, so we have to open a public hearing. Okay. Office of the Tax Clerk for Town of North Branford, legal notice. Notice of public hearing, sewer user charge. North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority pursuant to section 7-255 of the Connecticut General Statutes will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 16, 2014, at 7:30 PM at the Town Hall Town Council Chambers, 909 Foxen Road, North Branford, for the purpose of establishing a proposed sewer user fee for the 2014-15 fiscal year. The proposed charge is $375 per unit, and a copy of the proposed charger is on file in the town clerk's office, and is available for inspection by the public, dated in North Branford, Connecticut, this third day of September 2014, Water Pollution Control Authority, Town of North Branford.
Did I read this right? No, no increase?
Yes, that's correct.
This is the first time since we had sewers that we had no increase?
Oh, actually, this will be the third year at the same, at the same rate. The proposed rate is $375 per...
Twelve thirteen, okay, twelve thirteen.
Per unit. And basically, just to give you a couple highlights, overall expenses, the biggest variation is intermunicipal costs, or the biggest cost are intermunicipal costs in our, our contract operations. The good news is, we went out to bid for our contract operations. Our current vendor, Viola Water, came in, and basically, there, I think they had about 2% per year projected increase for their operations. There wasn't a big change there. Intermunicipal costs, which we pay to Greater New Haven, WPCA, Branford, and North Haven, that varies, varies based upon the flow. And generally, what I've seen over the years is, if we have a dry year, our pipes don't leak as much, so, well, actually, if we have a wet year, our flow doesn't go up as much as the other municipalities, because they generally have older pipes, so we make out a little bit, in terms of our percentage of flow to those municipalities goes down. In a dry year, it goes the other way. There's not much infiltration or leakage in there, and our proportion generally goes up. That's a variation I've seen through all the years. It generally happens. But there's a minor fluctuation, so it's gone up a little bit this year, it's projected to, we have estimated budgets from the other municipalities. The only other thing to point out, too, is we're paying capital costs for treatment plant upgrades. We pay them off for North Haven, but we pay our, our share of the capital cost. We did that for North Haven, there's still some costs that we're incurring when North Branford upgraded their plant. And we've been supplementing our operating costs from our capital fund for our, what we had for supplemental connection fees. That pot of money is running dry, and so somewhere in maybe the next three or four years, we're going to be out of that. So what we're, I think we're okay for this year, but probably, look, starting in next year, we're going to have to look to, we're probably going to look at some type of increase to cover those costs as that pot of money declines, and try to keep that going. Again, we've been monitoring this, we've, it's, it's lasted us quite a while, but we're just anticipating that down the road. So I'm just, just bringing that to your attention, but currently, we're pretty consistent. The only other thing, I'm just going to put it, just let you know that we budgeted some pump replacements for some of the White Hollow system. They're, they're getting to be 24 years old, that we're, we're planning on doing that within this existing year. We're trying to prevent problems, that's, that's the whole key behind this. It's not a, we're looking to do that over a gradual period of time. But, but again, the good news, currently, projected the same rate for this year.
Knowing faces in the amount of users?
But, that really hasn't changed. Most of the people that, most people hooked up, there's, and the only other ones we're getting now is some of the commercial properties along Route 80, gradually connecting when we did the extension up, up there a number of years ago. And as properties change hands, we, we get people hooking up that hadn't hooked up before, but it's probably half dozen to a dozen a year, at the most. It really doesn't change the number of users perceptibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Are there any citizen's statements? Okay, item I, the adoption of the...
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candyler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Webber?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hoxton?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
I'll, I'll make the...
I'll, I'll make the motion that we be hereby resolved that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority acting in its capacity as a sewer authority for the Town of North Branford hereby adopts the attached sewer capital budget for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year. Do you want to be the? Doesn't matter?
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Bucy, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Chair Cantora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Appleton?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Flannin?
Yes.
Counselor Bucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hobson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes. Before we move off this, I have a question for Kirk. I'm looking through this in three oh two utilities. Looking at the United Illuminating Bills, the Red One Thirty-nine pumping station is nine thousand dollars a year. Tin Lakes Road is four thousand dollars a year. What's the difference? What are we doing on One Thirty-nine?
Those are bigger pumps. One Thirty-nine is a big, big pump station. Generally, bigger pump, that was sized as the main pump station initially. Ton Lakes Road is basically a can system and ground. It's smaller.
Smaller, so it's just bigger, bigger pump.
And there's some heating costs associated with that main pump station, a few other things that go along. That's, I think it's electric heat, it only goes on.
Where is the One Thirty-nine?
It's, it's in the North Farms condos complex. It's in back there along the farm, basically along the Farm River. We have a.
Along the Branford River?
Along the Branford River, yes.
So, that's for, that pump, what does that handle? What flows downhill to that?
Basically, from Marshfield, all North Farms.
Yellow Lee Housing?
Yellow Lee Housing, Route One Thirty-nine, that area. And it was sized to go further to the east.
Does each unit in North Farms, do they, each unit pays these?
They pay, yeah, it's residential units, they pay the, right, every residential unit pays that. Whether you got two people living in it or six, we don't differentiate, but the residential unit pays a flat rate.
So, okay.
Kirk, Mike, I'm going to add on to that. So, if they did do a sewer project going up north towards the Guilford Line on eighty, would that line tie into that pump as well?
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority acting as its capacity as a sewer authority for the Town of North Branford hereby adopts the attached sewer budget and establishes a sewer fee of three hundred and seventy-five dollars per unit for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Bucy, seconded by Counselor Angelo, roll call.
Deputy Mayor Appleton?
Yes.
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 Counselor Flannin?
Yes.
Counselor Bucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hobson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Town managers' report.
Just one minute, Mr. Mayor, if we could, could we just go back to permanent project for a minute? The TBS roof project has been added to the permanent project commission and that was done in August from the building, or from the town council and moved to the permanent project building commission. And tonight, Tom Hibbert is here, who was the architect for the high school roof project. And the motion that was made by the council when we sent it was to look at the possibility of a pitched roof on TBS. And there was great discussion at the permanent project building committee meeting in regards to the pitched roof. And I had asked him to come to the council tonight so that he could give that same, give his insight to that, to the council, since he is more of an expert in that field than me trying to convey what he had told us at the meeting. And he gave some pros and cons. So, if you don't mind, if Mr. Hibbert could just come up to the microphone and kind of talk about and kind of get a sense from the council of what they were looking for in a pitched roof on TBS.
Tom Hibbert, Hibbert and Rose, architects. I do have a small handout that I'll pass out and we can kind of go over some visual conditions. As stated, we are the architects for the North Branford High School, that's just been completed. And over the years, we've done a number of roof replacement projects. I think we have over, right now, eighty government roof replacement projects and some of them have been, a small number have been, jobs where we have installed sloped roofs onto flat roofs. And I'm just going to go over some of the issues, the pros, the cons, and some of the items or issues that we evaluate, that we look at when we're considering putting a sloped roof on a flat roof. Of course, you know, the first one is to evaluate the ability of the existing structure to support the additional weight of the new roof structure. And school facilities, and actually, it's in the building code, are considered high-value buildings. They're provided with strong structures. High-value buildings tend to be, you know, hospitals, fire stations, we include schools in there because we want them to survive a variety of conditions, earthquakes, windstorms. So, we find that actually, the structural part of adding some additional weight in most schools is usually not a problem. And I would expect from, I was in Totucket last year when you did the initial walkthrough, so I had some photographs of it, and I did take a look at, and I think it's, my guess is, the age of the building, the type of construction, we could add some additional weight to that building. That's my opinion. Then we have to consider combustible versus non-combustible. Schools must be non-combustible or fully sprinkled. And we've worked on a few of these where we've had wood buildings or wood roof structures. We just re-roofed one over in Meriden this past year, it was an existing sloped roof. But throughout the entire attic space, it was fully sprinkled. And I don't believe Totucket is sprinkled. So, almost by default, most of the pitched roofs that we've put on schools have been a metal structure and a metal roof. The picture over on the left-hand side is actually a housing authority project that we did many years ago, and that was allowed to be a wood structure on the wood buildings. And that was an asphalt shingle roof. We end up, if we, if it isn't practical to do a wood roof, that kind of pushes you out of the asphalt shingle roof system and towards the metal roof system. You do see asphalt shingle systems on some of these metal buildings, but when you really get into it, they're on a structurally insulated panel or it's plywood on top of a metal deck on top of the sloped roof structure. So, they're pretty, pretty involved. The other thing we have to consider is the sloped roof may, you have mechanical units up on the roof and some of those mechanical units will, they will have to be raised and ductwork extended, et cetera. And so, you have to build the structure up, the supports up to do that. On the smaller units, it's not a, not a big issue. They only weigh a few pounds, you can just frame it out with light gauge metal framing. On the larger units, you can see on the right-hand picture, that's actually a picture of Totucket, and you have a very large mechanical unit there. So, we'd have to decide how we would handle that. And obviously, you know, for something like that, I would anticipate additional structure would need to be added. Well, so, what we find on a lot of these schools is, we kind of do, we end up doing a combination on a lot of schools where part, some of the roofs are done in a sloped roof, the roofs that are, that lend themselves to a sloped roof that are easy and cost-effective, we do them in sloped roof. And some roof areas, we just have to do a nut, we leave as the flat roof. Totucket School has drains in many roofs that are located towards the center of the building. That upper right-hand photograph, you can see the two drains located near the center of the roof. And if we put on a sloped roof, we would be moving the water not to the center of the roof, a drain in the center of the roof, we'd be pushing it to the outside edge, the perimeter edge, the gutter. So, we have to collect the water in the gutters and get it back to a rainwater leader system. We're not really allowed, you're not allowed to leave dead-end pipes running through the building that go to a storm sewer or a sanitary sewer. So, if we have those dead-end pipes, you have to cut them off, you have to cap them, and they're abandoned and capped. The water is directed to the, to the gutters and the drains. On occasion, many occasions, we have to come down, we have to put in external drains along the outside of the building. So, we have to do some excavation and connect, bring down the rainwater leaders on the outside, connect them to the existing storm sewer and run them out to the storm sewer drain. And that was the case in that housing authority project that we did a number of years back. We actually had quite a bit of, quite a bit of underground storm sewage or drainage and piping that we had to add to the site. And that last picture over on the right-hand side, that's actually a picture of Totucket. And it's a little bit hard to see, but that little black stripe right there, that's a weep hole. And I believe this wall, I believe, is on the side of your gymnasium. And that weep hole, if you know anything about construction, if any water works its way into the wall, it gets into the cavity and it can weep out at the bottom. And you have to make some other provision. If we ran a sloped roof over that weep hole, we would have to make some other provision to either cap that wall or move that weep hole up to get that water out of the building. Because if water did get into that wall and now it was below the roof, it would now be leaking into the building. And actually, if I could, let me see. If I could go back, let me see. You notice too, on the, on the first page too, I went over it a little bit quick, but you can kind of see what we had to go through. That was up in Windsor at South Elementary School, but we had to take the roof down to the metal deck. We had to put on the insulation, we put down EPDM as a temporary roof, then we had to lay out the stringers. Then we had to build up, the second picture is, we're building up the vertical legs, putting on the top support member. And then the last picture is, you can see we're putting on the metal roof. And last picture. I'll just say that sloped and standing seam metal roofs tend to be about thirty, thirty to fifty percent more, depending upon the complexity. At South Windsor, or at Windsor, at South Elementary School, they had their roof drains were out towards the edge of the building. And they actually, they had a two-foot overhang, and the roof drain actually came down through the roof to an external rainwater leader. And that's one of the pictures on that previous page. So, it was actually easy to put the gutters on the outside and just bring the leader from the gutter back to that external rainwater leader. And in fact, I think that's the condition that you have at your gymnasium. So, you know, you've got a couple roofs that would be easy to place a standing seam roof on. Now, right here on this gymnasium section here, if you look at the pictures, your drains are to the outside and the rainwater leaders are actually on the outside of the building going down. So, we could easily put a gutter on the outside of that, just come down and connect to that external rainwater leader. The canopies are fairly easy to do, the higher roofs tend to be easier to do. You know, getting a standing seam roof in this narrow roof down, that's down between these two high roofs is going to be difficult. It's just going to be difficult to frame it and get the water to drain. The classroom wings are fairly easy to do. They're a little bit more expensive because, as I said, we have to take that, those internal drains and get some sort of rainwater leader system on the exterior of the building or move it to the outside edges and reconnect to that. So, those are some of the, the challenges in doing a, a standing, you know, making a flat roof into a standing seam roof. Imagine people have some questions?
Yeah, back to your weep hole, where is that condition? Is that, would that be right over here on the existing roof that's just to the left of it?
I believe that's on the gymnasium. I took those last, about a year ago.
So, if you go back to the picture with it there, would it be, or would we be looking at it with that wall that's sticking up there? So, is this condition over here?
Yes.
Okay. So, if we had a slope that covered that wall, it's a non-issue. But also, the way these are constructed, you know, there's a path behind this wall. So, and there's typically a path, you know, always behind the brick, that's how weeds work. So, if you had to, you could raise the weed.
Yes, which is a considerable cost. Probably, unless we've had to raise weep holes and you end up piece by piece taking that dirt off. Leave budget behind and all of a sudden, what?
Don, you know how many times this roof's been done since it was built?
No, I don't. The cafeteria was done relatively recently, but I don't recall. I mean, I'm, I'm sure it hasn't been done while I've been around, so you'd be past a twenty-year life cycle for reimbursement. And the other, one, one other piece of information, and I can't, I'm not sure of this, but I was told by the electric division a number of years ago when we had a transformer, when they changed the transformer in front of the school, that that was actually designed to be a two-story building. And it was at that time, the reason the transformers have the size of the classroom is it was electric heat. We changed it to a boiler in the early nineties. But as I said, so I'm sure there's a way to confirm the design. But I think probably the structure is not going to be an issue.
And it typically isn't with schools.
And the other thing, you know, I mean, I remember when this school came online and it, it initially leaked like a sieve. I mean, just like this one that we just finished. So.
What year was that?
Well, I was in.
Nineteen seventy is when it was completed.
Yeah, back in, you go, look at the whole history of roofing. You know, back in the sixties and seventies, we were actually trying to get water to pond on roofs to cool them. That was the design theory. The issue was, if you held the water on the roof, if you had any failure anywhere in any seam, any joint, now you had a water source to keep feeding it. So, in the eighties, they went to an eighth inch per foot slope, which helped the situation. But it really wasn't quite enough to move the water. And what we noticed on long spans, when you got snow load, those spans would flatten out, get deflection in the structure, which is designed to do, but they would literally go dead level again. Then we went to a quarter inch per foot in the nineties, and the quarter inch per foot really seems to get the water to the roof drains. But we're still, we kind of have that. You can look, go up on roofs, I've been up on a lot of them, and you see that history. We still see the dead level roof out there.
So, what'd we do in, I don't know, two thousand and ten on our new school at least, like a sieve?
I don't know, I'd have to take a look at it. I don't know, I don't know. But generally, if the water is flowing and everything's installed in a watershed fashion, a seam might open up, but you're not ponding that water, so you don't have that water source.
The question I have is, I know it's more expensive to go to pitched roof or, you know, or game type, but what's the lifespan on, on that in comparison to, you know, one of your better flat roofs? That, like, we're having problems with this one leaking all the time and we're just wondering, you know, is it better to spend the money, you know, once and get, get a better roof or?
No, you're right, the, the standing seam metal roofs can come with, they, they start at a thirty-year life cycle and really, they, they push them out to forty years a lot of times.
Opposed to?
Most flat roofs that you're putting, well, the state of Connecticut requires a minimum twenty-year, non-prorated, no-dollar-limit warranty. So, most of flat roofs are twenty-year roofs. And, you know, you're looking, for the most part, of almost doubling your lifespan.
Just, just to clear that.
Now, you can buy more.
Just to be clear on that point, it's the material that's twenty years.
Not the label.
Because we have no warranty on this brand-new school that's leaking.
Right. That's what I thought. Okay.
We got one on the material.
Right.
But not on the two left, two pieces going together. And if you think we do, then you need to talk to him and we need to sue somebody.
I don't know, I'm not going to talk about that, but my understanding of state statutes and requirements is you're supposed to get a minimum twenty-year, non-prorated, no-dollar-limit warranty.
Great, so we need to look into this.
I don't, I won't speak to any, that's what I do. And I understand that that is a requirement of the Office of School Facilities.
See, when we started having issues with it, we were told it was the material, not the, see, it had to be a certified installer in order for them to give it, but it wasn't for the roof leaking, it was. but it wasn't for the roof leaking, it was the material failure.
You know, and I agree too. There's two things you buy when you buy a roof. You buy the quality of the material. You buy, you can buy a warranty for the material and the labor. You're buying two things, quality of the roof itself and the quality of the warranty. You can buy excellent roofing products. And literally, they are drop shipped.
We might have not had in our bid specs the right warranty.
I really don't want to comment on that.
One of the other problems...
I'll say what I do. What I do is a non-prorated, no...
I'm just trying to get a handle on what we should be doing. And that's why you're here. Because that's a problem too, with paying people to shovel the roofs off and then they're digging the shovels into the membranes. So maybe, it might be worth looking into, I mean, spending a little bit more money on.
Even if you did it partly.
I mean, any sloped roof, you know, any sloped roof, typically the only, the only water that you get in when it leaks is what happens to fall in that area. With a flat roof, the water you're getting in a leak is all the water from this half-acre or acre building that might be heading in that direction.
Roof leaks are, I mean, water's insidious. I mean, I've seen the leak eighty feet away from where it actually shows up in a roof. And I've seen it leak on some buildings for years and nobody knew it was leaking. Some of these concrete decks, they literally become swivel.
When you tear the roof apart, you'll find a leak.
Oh yeah, we've torn roof parts. We just, you know, soaking insulation, soaked insulation and...
So to interrupt you for a minute, so where was the building committee's thoughts on this?
Well, they didn't have any thoughts on it yet because they didn't have it on their agenda to begin with. And we haven't officially appointed an architect yet. So it's to give the building committee some direction as to, do we want to do a flat roof bid spec with an add alternate pitched? Or the other way around, or a combination, or... Because you'd hate to have it go out to bid or have the architect design it one way and then decide that you have to, you wanted something else. So then you have to pay to have the drawings redone to whatever we want. So they were looking for some direction from the council as to what the council would prefer.
Thank you. Well, everyone knows where I am. Put your money in your roof and your building takes care of itself. So I would go for the, and then it's been my experience on these metal roofs that the reality is, it's the paint surface on the roof that really, when the paint's gone, the roof goes fairly quick. So what are your thoughts on doing aluminum?
We've done a number of aluminum roofs. And we do them typically when we get down around the coastline. Yeah.
So they don't look like bright aluminum. But the problem with the steel that I've seen is, once the paint's gone, your roof goes pretty fast.
The paints have gotten better. But when we moved down towards the coastline, we're looking at aluminum.
Right.
And, you know, in the high school, all the facias are aluminum. All the sheet metal work is aluminum. Thing too is, people get up there with a ladder, work on the roof. That ladder works against that gutter or that fascia.
As soon as you scratch the paint off.
It's gone in the first year.
The other question that they had was the portables that are on... Is that, does that qualify for reimbursement from the state? What's the, what happens with that? Because I know those are an issue with leaks there. And so I didn't know if that's included, excluded from the project.
The state told us that they are designed to be temporary and therefore they're not...
Okay, okay.
And I think also in terms of putting a sloped roof on them, they're designed right down to the minimum. There isn't any, there isn't a lot of extra in those term, in those structurally. I don't think they're strong enough.
And the cafeteria that was done, I think it was done about seven years ago, somewhere around that area. We did not go to the state for reimbursement and we just did it...
The state looks at their record. You just, all you do is go into the state website, their history file for your town and your buildings, and you look if they've qual, if they have any roofing projects.
Yeah, I don't believe we took any state money for that, so that would not be, they would not have reset the clock.
Okay, so if we wanted to redo that roof along with everything else, it would be reimbursable? Okay.
I don't ever remember filing any paperwork for that.
Were there any other renovations done at the school that, there was no as-new renovations? No, okay. You should be good, but we could just check the state website.
Well, for myself, I'm tired of putting, spending money for roofs and having them leak a year later. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about it, though.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it makes sense to look at...
I agree, I would be looking at it with the, and I think, you know, very valid point that this building may need a combination. You know, we may need some flat, and I'm fine with, you know, a section of it being flat or, you know, low slope. But I would look at the, not only that, you get a chance to make your buildings look good with the, you know...
For sure, yeah.
Yeah, you drive in and it's like, that's a nice building. Instead of, wow, this looks like a chicken coop. So I think that, you know, if you're spending the money, it would be a bonded thing. I'd be looking at it. You know, for years, I've been preaching to go with sloped roofs on stuff and, I mean, it just makes sense. I know it costs a little more now, but, you know, hopefully I'll be dead before we have to look at it again.
Well, even just the hassle factor, I mean, if we do it right the first time, then we're not going to have to, more time to worry about other things.
Yeah, more pressing. It's not sense in doing stuff two or three times.
Okay, so I'll just report back to the building committee to proceed with... Whatever, I mean, once the architect is appointed in...
Right.
If it has to be a combo or all pitched.
Right, and that would be what they would figure out.
Right, okay.
When they were doing it. Whatever makes the most sense.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tom Manager's report. Steve Grant, review of application.
Yes, we've got another opportunity, as I mentioned, for November twenty-eighth to submit an application. Last time around in April, we put together and prioritized for MBIS and Stanley T. Williams. And, you know, going through the numbers, looking at this, one of the things I noticed, and talking with Pam and looking at this, is that for MBIS, we should probably look at electrical upgrade, a timer system and fencing for that site. So I would recommend at this point, I think it might make sense, seeing how we didn't get awarded back in April, we take it and rewrap this or repackage this as a priority for MBIS, taking in those other elements, scale back the award to something like three hundred, three fifty versus a five hundred, which is the cap limit. And based on your priority, the last time around, just focus on MBIS. If you all think that makes sense and I can repackage it that way and give it another shot. Maybe it goes through, maybe it doesn't, but give it another, another chance.
Well, last night at Park and Rec Commission, they talked about the breakers in the lighting system and the timers, everything down at Memorial Field there, and some of the issues that they are having there on electrical issues. So I think it makes sense to look at that as part of this. If we're going to redo the tennis courts and the basketball courts, I think that has to be looked at also, along with the fencing. So I would be in favor of doing just the memorial, the memorial courts, the basketball courts, the fencing, all that electrical on this grant application. Just concentrate on that.
Yeah, the, their committee, or Roseanne's working on that and I'm going to invite her back for the, or invite her to the October seventh meeting to give the report. I understand that she's still got a couple invoices and other things she's tracking down and bringing back. But in her initial preliminary look at is that they are in the black. She just doesn't know how much at this point. But that there was a good festival year and just looking to crunch, you know, those numbers in and have her come here for the seventh and report on what's going on.
And if they don't have them, that they're all complete, they're still not complete, I would still like a preliminary draft figure with the understanding that it is draft because I can't believe that by October, the invoices that would be outstanding would be all that great.
Well, I know if I was doing any work there, I'd have my invoice in.
I know. I mean, they, the revenue has to be set because that's all deposited. There is no more revenue coming in from it. So that side is set. And my guess is, most of the expenses, the major ones, are probably in. They're probably still waiting for some stragglers. But I think we need a report that is preliminary if it's, if there's still some open invoices and it's a draft at that point in time.
Sure.
A few months.
Mr. Mayor, just back to the square work, our budget, item five A two, I don't think it's happening?
Yeah, we did that motion first by mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did them backwards.
Just to keep you on your toes, Kurt.
Wanted to see if anybody was paying attention, Kurt.
Community events and presentations. Citizen statements, petitions and correspondence.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor. I just want to kind of give you a highlight. I'm in receipt of the fire safety analysis that was recently done for the Sierra Road project for J.J. Sullivan. And from my preliminary evaluation, I don't see any issues from the fire safety standpoint. We had a very productive discussion with the consultant within the last two weeks. And again, our suggestions were very reasonable and they've been made as part of their plan under the fire safety analysis.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resignations and appointments. Unfinished business discussion in action. Item A, I believe that's still tabled. Okay, item B, Capitol Projects, Police Department Vehicle Purchase, item I.
I'd like to commend the lieutenant for a very comprehensive, complete, but yet concise report on the need for three additional cars in the police department. I think it's comprehensive. The pictures show the need. And I think he did a good job of showing how it could be paid for. I strongly support this project. I think those pictures pretty well show that there's some problems with many of the vehicles. It's a good thing there wasn't a passenger in the Jeep's car.
Could somebody, either the lieutenant or somebody from the police commission, give me some statistics on how many patrolmen we have on the road at any one time? How many detectives we have on duty at any one time? And how many administrative people we have cars assigned to on any given shift?
Currently, we have one detective because we have two men out that are injured. Usually the Bureau for the last thirty-five years, there's two people in the Bureau.
Two guys on duty at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
We have one officer that's in the records. That's our court liaison officer. He's to court four or five times a day. Matter of fact, today they had to go to Massachusetts to pick up a prisoner. Two people went to Massachusetts. And then you have myself and the lieutenant on the day shift. And then you have three or four patrol officers working different shifts, either days, evenings or midnights.
So each, each shift has three to four officers out on the road?
Yes.
Okay, so we clearly need two administrative cars for yourself and lieutenant. We need four cars minimum for the patrol people. The records room officer and two detectives.
Yes, two administrative cars for detectives because a lot of times they're working on separate cases. You may have one in New Haven, you may have one in East Haven. And then the record rooms officer, back and forth to court every day. The lieutenant has a vehicle and I have a vehicle.
Right, so if my math is correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm seeing two detectives, the records room officer, two administrative people and four patrol officers. So that there's, any shift, we're looking at approximately nine cars on the road. And say if a car breaks down, we need a tenth car.
That's for the day shift, yes, that's day shift.
And is the night shift less or more?
Less, because...
Okay, so let's go with the...
Because you no longer have the detectives or the record room officer or myself working the nights. I know what your question is going to be about the cars, how many cars that we have.
Where I'm going, yes, you're right. Where I'm going is, there's, taking out your car, obviously, we can't use that anymore. It's got to go. Car that was destroyed in the accident, it's got to go. And you're telling us the Durango, the oh-nine Durango car forty-nine is shot. So we're losing three cars. It's stupid to put any money in, we've got to get rid of them. Or, I'm sorry, the Durango you're going to put into the detective division.
Yes.
And get rid of one of the detective SUVs.
Right.
I got that backwards. So I think that leaves twelve cars. If we buy three, we'd be up to fifteen cars. When, what I'm looking at is, we're going to have nine to ten cars that are going to be on the road at any one time. And I'm scratching my head since the last meeting. With the population we have in the police department now, why do we need fifteen cars?
Well, take out your administrative cars. So we have ten patrol cars. The ten patrol cars are on a rotating basis. We're putting on between three thousand and thirty-five hundred miles per month on our vehicles.
Right.
If you reduce the fleet and the cars don't rotate, the mileage is going to go up, obviously, because you have less cars on the road. And the repairs are going to go up. Now, any approach?
I have, I have a quick handout. The, not only do we have... Here's our, here's our training for the last thirteen, fourteen months. If you look at the training, there's over ninety, ninety-four training sessions that our officers attended in order to serve the community in a more professional way. These officers that took the courses throughout the state of Connecticut. So vehicles are being used at all times for the training. Plus, we have cars that are, obviously, that are taken off the road on a daily basis for maintenance. They go into the town garage on Mondays and Tuesdays for maintenance. We also have cars that are used on all our construction sites that we get paid ten dollars an hour by the contract. So it's not only for patrol, it's also for transportation for a lot of our training. So in approximately a twelve-month period, there's over ninety-four classes that our police officers travel throughout the state of Connecticut for training.
Is that a one-day engagement or longer?
It could be, it could be one day, it could be a five-day course. Our FTO, a field training officer to get certified, that's a ten-day course. We currently have sergeant tests Saturday. As soon as we find out how many people pass the test, Joe, they have to go to the supervisory school. That's a seven-day course.
Okay.
And then we have our mandated training sixty-five hours every three years. We're constantly updating our training.
And then, in your opinion, you're telling us that this is the minimum amount of cars you need to function? Fifteen, fifteen cars at all times?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Because if you look at the sheet, when we bought our four cars, if you look at the mileage, the mileage is very, very close. I think it was 2011. That's because
Four DAVX.
Right. That's because we're on a rotating basis. We're not, we're not running the cars twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They have to sit. They have to get a break. If we were to run these cars more often, then we're not going to be in front of the council for more repair money or for cars quicker. So, if you look at those four cars, the mileage is very similar. That's because we rotate. We don't run them twenty-four seven. We can't.
All right. And one more question. Matt, your car, was that car purchased new and assigned to you back in '04?
Two thousand and four, yes.
So, you had that car for twenty years?
Ten.
Almost eleven years.
Ten, I'm sorry.
It felt like twenty.
Okay, thanks. Got it.
Any other questions?
Well, there's no question we need the car. So, what do we do? They've come up with some money, and by getting the three cars, it's only cost the town an extra seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cents. So, I have to make a motion that we buy the car.
And I'll second that. So, we're going to appropriate the thirty-five thousand that's in capital to use, and then we're appropriating another seventy-three hundred dollars approximately to purchase.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Henniger?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Hobson?
Yes.
Counselor Russ?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Did you want to get up?
I just, you guys clear on any questions on any of that? Obviously, you can see just by the list of where we stand out of four of them, car ten, eleven, fourteen, fifteen in the mileage, the recirculator through the department, obviously, the chief's car being in fire, and the other one being totaled. That's six out of the fifteen that's either out of commission or on their last leg per se.
Yeah.
And it doesn't make sense putting any more dollars and cents into some of these cars at this point. I think the three new vehicles will take the place, obviously, of a few of these assigned, as the commission looks at assigning vehicles to the proper places where they need to be, whether they're admin cars or detective or records room and that kind of stuff. But, you know, even replacing the three of them, you know, before long, we're going to have a few of these other ones that are, car eight's already at, and this is now as of the twenty-fifth, we're putting on twenty-five hundred to three thousand miles a month. We already got a few thousand miles more on them, so if you guys have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Did you realize we voted to fund them?
I do. I just want to make sure you're comfortable with it, and you're good with it. If you have any other questions, I appreciate it. You guys are, you guys are good.
No, a lot of things we do up here is confusing.
I just want to make sure if you had any questions, it's a little bit confusing here on our end, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to know, we're going to have to do the financial housekeeping in order, because the factor in here on the date is that money from the 101 that goes to the gang. So, that will come back as, you know, transportation.
Right.
John, just a question. We approved the money, but did we approve what cars are being approved, or did we?
I think the four that, or the three that they talked about, the jeeps.
But that's not what the motion was.
The motion was to fund the balance to get the vehicles.
Correct.
The thirty-five thousand from capital, and then funding an additional approximately seventy-three hundred dollars for the funding of the vehicles.
I know what you're saying. They're already allocated.
I don't have a gavel.
At budget time. Then we got some insurance money, and the differential was seventy-three hundred.
Right.
Basically, you're given permission to get the extra seventy-three hundred.
Trying to clear something up here.
Right, it's for the funding. That's what we are appropriating as the funding.
I think we need Dodge Challengers with them.
What are you trying to say?
All right, I'm just moving.
No, I know what you're saying, Mayor, and I think it's an important point, because I think what we've given them the authorization to do is that they're going to follow through and buy two more interceptors is what they're going to get, following what they did before. And the admin car for the chief is going to be whatever was in the memo way, you know, Taurus. Taurus, yeah.
I'm going optimistic every day.
And that would proceed
Right, the additional funding was based on their recommendation to purchase the two vehicles. I mean, that's where all the numbers came from, was based on their recommendation.
I just wanted to connect with Marie.
Yes, I do.
Always say no, I don't know.
I just wanted to say it was going to be admission, they won't pay you doing it.
I asked.
It's unfortunate, but you really can't. They got a limited life, and it's like laying out whatever it is, even with the insurance money. We're spending seventy, eighty thousand dollars.
Are you okay with that?
I'm just concerned that those particular cars, that's who we are saying there.
Now, let's see that, we don't have
We had to address this to me over there.
I asked John, but I didn't really get anything. John, Marie's question is, the money that we just approved, is that, can we say those are going to, I guess, to patrol cars and car for the chief, or we just approved the money and the police commission?
Decides.
Decides.
Yeah. We are the funding authority. They represented that they need the money for those specific purposes. We acted on that representation. I don't think we, I don't think it's our role to get into the style or the particular use. We delegate that to the police commission, the department. If for any reason what they, they don't follow through on the representations, I would hope they'd come back here for some reason. But clearly, the council received an excellent presentation, I think, and it was key to certain vehicles. But we would not, I would not expect that the council would get involved in any style issues or even how they're going to be deployed. That's a police matter.
Okay.
I understand.
All right. Item two, fire department tanker truck.
If you recall, at the last town council meeting, I broached the subject of, with the planning for the budget in this current fiscal year, we started to work on the anticipated acquisition of a tanker truck for District Three. And based upon that information, we were working with a vendor. At the last town council meeting, I said, unfortunately, the vendor that we were working with as of August first eliminated the construction of fire tankers. Based upon the preliminary set of specifications that we've been working on since probably four to five months ago, it's our estimation, and it was discussed at the Board of Fire Commissioners' meeting last week, and with their approval, I'm approaching you tonight, that the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we anticipated would suit our needs very well, looking at that previous vendor, no longer is possible. So, I'm approaching the council and requesting that, under the capital incentive program, an additional fifty thousand dollars be appropriated to give us a cap of three-hundred-thousand dollars for the acquisition of a tanker truck that we have been working on.
Where are you, Chief, with pricing the truck from an alternate supplier? Do we know that three-hundred thousand dollars is the right number?
Without violating any type of purchasing regulations or town ordinances, we have reviewed the town specs that we currently have with a couple vendors, and we should be in the ballpark.
So, it's three hundred on the, giving you a little bit of cushion to, so that you don't have to come back to us, that you need more funding?
Keeping my fingers crossed that three-hundred thousand dollars will do that.
Okay.
Again, that would be in the capital incentive program.
Right.
I got a question for you, and I have to ask. So, we need, we need a truck to haul water.
That has to meet a certain set of NFPA specifications.
I'll give you that. So, just tell me that we're not above that spec.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't understand.
We're
That he's not giving a big a truck for his money.
I know the word. I was asking if we have bells and whistles, that we could give up and still have a truck that hauls water. That's what I was asking.
And that's an excellent point, because as we looked at the specifications, I said to the apparatus committee, listen, I mean, I'm going to look at it with valued engineering in mind.
Right.
So, that's how we're going to build it. You're right.
The thing, too, is, it's like, if you had a truck that held water, if we were Caribbean island and there was no NFPA or anything like that, you could do that, but with the NFPA kind of dictating what something has to be, no, really, it's true, because you go to these places, they use an old pool truck or whatever, but, you know, we're not really
Unfortunately, really, it puts a lot of restraint, and at the same time mandates on what we can buy and what has to be on it. So, it's
That's what it is.
Yeah.
It's all mandates.
Chief, we don't have any issues with housing this up at Company Three. There is a bay for it.
That's correct. Yep, and the way the specs are written, the size of the opening, be it width or height, are provided, and it's totally based upon the manufacturer to make sure that that truck fits in there without any problem.
Do we need a motion, or?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion that we add an additional fifty thousand.
Can we ask Anthony where we're going to get it? Fifty thousand dollars.
That's fine.
Pass the basket or the hallway outside.
We'll come up a little short on that.
You should, you should have gone ahead of the police cruisers.
We thought we could take it out of that same MBIX mine, because maybe two-fifty came out of it.
Okay.
And there's another fifty in there.
Or?
For, I mean, there's fifty, the money.
Look for another twenty-five.
Yeah, there's, there was enough to fund some of our capital projects for next year.
All right, so I have a motion.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fusi, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Henniger?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Hobson?
Yes.
Counselor Russ?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor, I don't know if you want to add another number four to this, or can I just mention something now that involves capital that was appropriated already?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Talk about now?
Yeah.
Okay. With this year's budget, with the graciousness of the town council, we were provided with an additional twenty-five thousand dollars that was earmarked for the fire department with the caveat, we could not use it for vehicles. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, one of the most important components of the entire town's emergency operation, naturally, is communications. We still find that there's a deficit in our communication system, and that goes from the East Haven line up towards the high school and middle school complex. I've been working with the radio vendor, looking at different avenues. I had conversation. I was really hoping to have at least a ballpark dollar figure to bring to the town council tonight on ways to look at correcting that. And you think about what we did to benefit the fire and police department under the COPS federal grant a couple of years ago, both of us now have a three-point Simmacast system. And for those of you that don't know what I'm talking about, at the same time that the dispatcher keys the microphone to call fire or police apparatus, there's three towers located throughout our community, Parson and Trail Road, Commerce Drive, and Reed Gap Road. So, simultaneously, the message is transmitted from those three points outward. Well, if you look at the radio signal itself, there's still dips and valleys that pose a reception problem by units. And one of those areas that was well-defined, we often call it an overlap zone in the radio technology area, is in that area that I just identified from the East Haven line up past the school complex. So, caring about the fire department, I'm looking at putting another transmitter site, and I'm actually looking at a site that's on top of Lake Salt and Stall behind the East Haven Police Department that would serve us well in that area. Another option would be on top of the East Haven High School, but it's not really that good. East Haven Fire has a transmitter up there, too. One-fifty Foxham Road has a cell tower, but it really, because of where it is, there's a dead zone outside of that. So, talking with our radiotech people today, we are looking at this other site. Now, I have that twenty-five thousand dollars that's available for capital, and by all means, it's a capital expense. It could not be done for that twenty-five thousand dollars. Maybe a part of it could be done for that twenty-five thousand dollars. So, again, you know, I kind of put the issue out there that there's a need to enhance our communication system more than what we've already done through federal grants. There's no other federal grants that I know that are out there right now. So, I'm telling you, we still have a deficiency in our emergency communication system that I would like to address with capital money.
So, you're saying it's going to cost more than the twenty-five that we gave you, correct?
I'm saying that if this is a project that we and the town council would like to take on, yes. Otherwise, that twenty-five thousand dollars would have to be earmarked for something else. But if I'm looking at it as a risk management for our department, this is a problem.
So, maybe if it's going to be more than twenty-five but less than fifty, you could get together with the chief of police and see once if maybe they want to go together with their twenty-five thousand in capital, and we could do that, once you get some numbers.
Yeah, exactly. But I'll tell you, I'm talking about one system. When you build a second system in there, I'm not talking on behalf of
No, I'm not talking about two systems. I'm just talking about two funding.
We are talking about two systems, two total systems, police and fire, totally independent systems.
Well, I wasn't talking about getting a police system. You were talking about a fire system.
Correct.
Right, so I'm just saying that you could maybe talk to the chief and see if you could use some of their money, because it's all communication and public safety.
Yeah, I think the lieutenant is working on a project for the dispatch center.
Okay. So, when you get more numbers and we'll come back.
Thank you.
You weren't really serious, were you?
Please, Chief.
You weren't really serious.
Item three, Board of Education track renovation.
Yeah, that, there's been some developments there. I spoke with Scott, maybe Don wants to speak to it, too, but they want to hold off on the track in terms of the next season versus trying to rush it to get it into the season, and also take a look at the vendor and the contract there. They weren't on the state contract, so that throws another wrinkle into it as well, so.
And we've been told by two other vendors that they would not do the installation at that time of the year. So, it just, it seems like we tried to run the race, but we didn't quite get there.
Okay. So, this is on hold in addition to the science labs right now?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
All right, item C, Solar Program Review.
Yeah, we had talked about this last meeting and there was, Lisa was here, DePonte was here and talked about it and I know the mayor, I know you met with her, I met with Aegis and Connecticut Solar to go through and Joe had asked me to call through and other participants, so I went through the, through the list and did that. And there were some bumps in the road, no doubt about it, there's some delays, but the upshot is that we've worked through that with UI. There's still some delays in terms of it, the process is the process and what they have to do with and the regulations that they have pure from the state of Connecticut. And so reviewing transformers, doing voltage studies, things of that nature. But now it's more transparent than it was for individuals going through the system. And I went through the list, I contacted, called them all, spoke to all but three and their experience is such that their comments, I have in two pages worth of comments, Aegis is a good company to work with and they're reputable and they're responsive and they're putting out a good product. UI, they're not so happy with because of the regulatory delay process. But Connecticut Solar and Maggie's participation was really on the education side, the customers didn't, outside of the one workshop that they may have come to or one of three workshops that she did, she did the educational component and all of that stuff, worked with the schools, the seventh graders, did another day at Country Paint Hardware and that was just more the education. She lived up to her end of the bargain and certainly Aegis has come back with these comments from companies that they would definitely work with them again, that they were professional, that they were responsive, that they were a pleasure to work with and things are moving along. They're not really happy with how long it takes, but they understand it now. And so Aegis and UI have worked out where these bumps in the road were to smooth, smooth things out, so. And I know you, you met with, I know Maggie and Aegis worked with, with Lisa and I, my understanding is that the panels went up yesterday or started to, I think, so.
Yeah, Lisa's here. I know the panels went up right at your house.
Yeah, Lisa DePonte. The panels were up yesterday, the interior portion is set up, but it still has to be, there's some connection stuff, but after the meeting, the last meeting, I've met, I've gotten multiple phone calls and emails from Aegis, Connecticut Solar Panel, or Solar Challenge, Maggie, she actually called me and came to my home. So everything's been resolved. You know, my biggest complaint was there was no transparency, there was no communication about what was going on. I mean, you know, so that's all resolved and like I say, my panels, they told me it's still going to be, even after the panels are set up, it's still going to be a month. But they gave me that, you know, because it's going to be, the building inspector has to inspect it, the UI has to come and inspect it before they can connect it all. So, you know, we're now at the, just waiting for it to be connected and hooked up and running stage, so thanks again for all your hard work, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
And there are two already energized within the system, two, two systems that are up and running, yeah, energized. And then, and like Lisa, there are others waiting for that, you know, for that modeling or transformer modeling and then the inspection and so forth, so there's a couple more steps beyond when you get the solar on your roof.
Right.
How many actually signed up?
I think it was 14.
Yeah, I think so, I think you're right. So it, it's, they've worked out the bugs and I mean, it is still a process, but now everything they know what the issues are, both UI and Aegis knowing when they go out there to talk to customers and so forth, so hopefully it's lots more there for everybody else in the pipeline and any others that sign up from here, this point forward.
All right, item 13, New Business Discussion in Action. Item A is appointment of Tom Hibbert and Rosa as architect for the TBS roof project.
In talking to Tom prior to the meeting, he told us that we need to table this because the state is behind in their paperwork and his paperwork as far as being on the state contract bid list is not complete yet and it should be complete any day. So we just need to table this until our next council meeting.
Make the motion to table it.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Whitworth, seconded by Counselor Fucy. Roll call?
Mayor Delora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, Draft of GASB 68 and Pension Fund Funding Policy.
Good evening. I provided you tonight with a couple different documents. The, in the GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is the rulemaking body that sets various rules for us to follow as the creation of financial reports and financial reporting standards. The item B, the back two pages are a summary of the GASB pronouncement and it talks about the different changes. What GASB tries to do, if you recall, four or five years ago, it was GASB 34. They put some new reporting standards in place, they put things like depreciation into the government world. And their focus is that you should be able to look at financial statements in North Branford, compare them to some town in Illinois, make it be the same language. They should be doing one thing here and one thing there so that investors, as they're investing in municipal bonds, have a uniform platform to look at financial information. So this latest change is GASB 68, talks about pension plans. And this encompasses a couple different things. What they're trying to do is A, make you adopt a funding policy for your town. And B, the unfunded liability, which has always been a large animal in some municipalities, now will be shown on your balance sheet. So you get these towns that refuse to fund their pension amounts and they have these terrific unfunded liabilities, that's now going to be reflected on the town financial report. In our case, as the pension committee knows, we do a good job of meaning our, 100% of our ARC consistently every year. We do have an unfunded liability, we're about maybe 60 to 80% on the various plans, like the police was 50% this last go-around due to some retirements. But whatever that unfunded liability is, will now be reflected on the town financial reports. Previously, it was a footnote, so no one ever looked at quite honestly. So now you're going to see it on the face of financial reports. That was one change, that was part of this GASB 68. And the second page was the creation of a funding policy. So if you look at item B, I've made a very simple, some of the towns that I have looked at have these 12, 13-page funding policies and talking to our actuary, straight to the point, two pages, basically what it says is you're going to, we're going to do actuarial evaluations every year, which we do currently. I put the flexibility to say we're going to meet at least 90% of our annual actuarially determined contribution, used to be called the ARC and now changed the name of that as well. The town historically has funded 100% of that number. I put it at 90 cents to give us some leeway in cases of bad budget year, we have to play a little bit. And it talks about the smoothing methods that we use as far as the actuarial value assets versus the, the actual value of assets in case there's any big blips in the market either one way or the other to smooth them out. So basically you have a policy in front of you that basically just kind of codifies what we do in real life now, but pursuant to GASB 68, we had to have a formal policy. So item B is the policy in the background, item C in your agenda is my little cover memo that says you adopt the policy. Could be tonight, could be next month, there's no greater, if you want to take home and read it, it's no greater urgency. But that's, that's the behind, the background to GASB 68. It was to unify standards across the country in financial reporting as it relates to pension plans and to require towns to create a funding policy on paper and to reflect the unfunded liability on their balance sheets.
Unfunded liability.
Unfunded liability, right. Exactly. Some towns, if you look at some of our neighboring towns in fact, are very unfunded in their liability. So it's going to show a large number on their balance sheet and it should hopefully wake them up to say, hey, this is, this is not good. And, you know, they're talking about intergenerational equity. What these towns are doing basically is, well, we won't pay, it's a bad year, we won't pay, we won't pay, and then 10 years later, they're issuing bonds. So the whole premise behind pensions is, as you're paying an employee, you have two costs. You have the current cost, my salary, and you have the future cost, my pension, but they relate to my service today. It's not fair that my kids and grandkids should pay for my salary today. So by, what the council does, by properly funding the amount, it's intergenerational equity. The cost that we're incurring today, you're paying today. Versus some towns choose not to fund it properly and just delay and say, oh, we'll get to it, we'll get to it, we'll get to it, and it ends up being a problem not for future generations. But that's not a problem we have in North Branford luckily.
Right. I mean, so basically, I mean, the way we're run-
Is top-notch.
It's going to be business as usual if you adopt that policy.
Exactly. It's basically taking our current practice that we do and just putting it in black and white to meet the GASB requirements. Exactly right.
Okay. I just have one comment, question, idea.
Yes.
I would rather see you put in there that we would fund 100% a year. That's just me. We've been doing that right along. Have we ever not funded it 100%?
No, not as long as I've been here.
So here's the thing, the way the towns around us get into trouble is one year they went to 90% and then the next, hey, no one's retiring this year, let's go to 70%. And I, I personally would rather put the number in at 100 and say, hey, we're going to hit it. But, I mean, that's just me. I don't know where the rest of you are.
Not a bad idea.
But we've done it forever through thick and thin.
Right.
And I, I just think that that's opening the door for us to be-
I try to be a little bit, you know-
I, I commend you for your creativity.
And it might not always be us, sure, on the council.
Exactly, right. There may be people here that think that me and Don's grandkids should fund this stuff, you know, and, you know, I-
I could easily change it back to 100.
Well, I, I'm just throwing it out there for conversation for the rest of them, but I would-
One point I'd like to make, and I've been on the pension committee for, I don't know, most of the years I've sat in this council. I have never, even before being on the town council, I've dealt with actuaries, I'm a trustee of my office pension plan, I've talked to them before. It's, to me, like speaking to somebody that doesn't speak English. I don't understand what they're talking about most of the time. You have to keep asking questions, you have to ask them to dumb it down, and I will tell you that in every instance, I find there's wathling in what they're telling you. They criticized us last year, Anthony, where they came in and said we had an unfunded liability and they hadn't dealt with it because times were bad during the recession, but they felt it was their obligation to bring it to our attention or it was going to be reflected on their actuarial, actuarial report if we didn't address it. Well, they gave us, if I remember correctly, three different scenarios for addressing it.
Correct.
One of them would have choked a horse, one of them was onerous, and a third was entirely palatable. It was all to remedy the same situation. So what you need to be careful of is when you take away your flexibility, and I agree with you, we should not underfund our pension exposure. It's critical that we fund what we owe to the people that are working for us and we don't want to get into a situation where we have a large unfunded liability because ultimately that comes back to bite us when we go out to bond, it's reflected in our financial statement and now we're being told, not only is it reflected in that footnote, now it's going to be front and center, it's going to cost us when we go to the market to bond. But I would like to maintain the flexibility only because from bitter experience, I just don't have the sense of confidence that these actuary computations are really as scientific as they would lead us to believe. I do sometimes listen to them and what I'm thinking to myself is probably a string of four-letter words that I couldn't say in a public hearing, but I've got a problem with their reports from time to time. And I don't know if Anthony disagrees with me, he deals with these people sometimes on a daily basis.
Right.
I, I think their intentions are good, but I just think the nature of that business is obfuscation and they're very good at that.
I have, you know, reasonable faith in Milliman's computations, I have good relations with the folks there and they're responsive to our efforts. Again, the 90 versus 100 were just a way to give us some flexibility in case it was a bad year and you didn't want to do 100%. I, I agree with you, the historical, you know, 100% we've always done, we take pride in that, saying that-
I, I think we do take pride in that.
So a lot of towns don't. So we take pride in 100% of our ARC for our OPEV and our pension, you know, historically since day one, so.
But Joe, Joe always makes a lot of sense, so. So I don't know, I mean-
I'm comfortable with a 90, knowing what our intentions are. And keep in mind, we adopt this policy at 100%, that doesn't stop the next council from saying, 80% works. Let's amend it.
You're right. All right, maybe the way it is.
Well, I'll make the motion to hear if the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached pension funding policy.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Whitworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Delora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
So that was C, right, adoption?
Yes.
Now we're going to go to appropriation transfers. Appropriation transfers, 2013, 14.
The appropriation transfers, there's some pretty significant numbers on there and again, as I mentioned last, last month's meeting, it appears that through the efforts of the town manager, we are going to end up in the black on the expenditure side of the house, which if you turn the clock back to the winter, was very sus- suspect. The, obviously we talked about Public Works Department being the larger source of the expenditures. You'll see the police department, through some significant savings, actually came through and bailed out the Public Works this time. And it kind of goes in edge and flows. I mean, some years Fran has surplus money that he bails out other departments, this year it happened to be the police department that has some savings. That goes back to the officer that was at budget time, was questionable when he was going to come back or not, if he came back, ended up not coming back. Pension, social security, some of the newer officers were in the pension plan for that first year, that accounts for the large savings there. So, you know, variety of factors. The other, you see some capital items on there, also moving them from the current year's budget, the Microsoft Office update, that's going to be implemented this year, so rather than have that money lapse, we moved it out to the capital project fund. The same thing with the balance of PAM's equipment and the auditorium water issue that we talked about, the $60,000 there. Because it was general fund appropriation, rather than having it lapse June 30th, we're going to move it out to the capital project fund where it can live on until we get a firm game plan and we're going to, you know, give the money to. You also see some sewer work transfers on there as well, not to the same magnitude, but basically just a couple of others. Any questions on any of the transfers at all?
I make a motion to approve the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the treasurer finance director.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Delora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item E, Financial Report, August 31st, 2014.
There isn't really a lot of activity yet, we're only talking a couple months into the, into the process, so the numbers really are insignificant at this point. You see, we're, you know, slightly three tenths of a point ahead on overall revenue, 41% versus 40.7, and it appears to be about 2% over on, on the expenditure side of the house, but again, the numbers are so new, it doesn't really, you know, worth much conversation quite honestly at this point. Nothing is over expended on the bottom side yet. Tax collection's right about on target, 51.8 versus 52. Nothing really, nothing to talk about.
I get unnerved, Anthony, if I don't hear that magic term.
It's unremarkable.
Okay, that's what we wanted to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, Approval of Tax Refunds.
I'll move this.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fucy, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Delora?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item G, Board of Education Quarterly Balances.
There was a discussion that quarterly, in the second meeting of the month being the pseudo-finance committee meeting, that the council requested the balances on the tiplo accounts we got from the board of it, assisted the information that was provided through Don and Ken on this balance.
Don, I just have a question. On the FRC, there's a little note that on the balance in your FRC account, does it mean you- balance in your F R C account, does it mean you haven't paid the summer camp? That aren't, it says, aren't paid yet. So, none of the summer camp salaries are out of that money? Or?
I would have to, I don't have to back up for this.
Okay. I mean, the explanation doesn't make sense to me, I guess, because if summer camp is paid every two weeks, does it not draw out of that account? You draw someplace else and then you transfer?
Right.
Okay.
So, that's, my, my assumption would be that that, everything always runs through payroll. Doesn't matter what it is.
Right.
Even the game workers at the high school run through payroll.
And then you make transfers?
At some point in time, and usually it's on a monthly basis, but in July and August, it might not be, I basically give Kim an invoice. And she writes the check from the grant account, from the family resource account. And then usually, we don't settle up with the smaller ones until, as you know, like with the-
After school.
-Rice and Control enrichment, we just usually do that once a year at the end of the year, sometimes twice a year.
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you, Don. Item H, community center parking.
Okay. In the, in our packets that were at the desk tonight is the layout of the parking for the new community center, or the new parking lot that has been done. And at our communication committee meeting last week, we had talked about the parking situation and parking spots and possibly designating certain spots for Board of Ed, community center. Well, last night, I was at the Park and Rec Commission and I found out information that they had actually discussed this topic at several meetings ago in regards to what the parking was going to be there. And they were told to wait until the parking lot was all done and striped. They are very concerned about the spaces directly in front of the main entrance to the community center. So, that would be to the left of the blue area that you see there, those, those spots directly in front of the, the main doors. They would like to see that those spaces be designated, no employee parking there, no Board of Ed employees park in those spots, or Park and Rec employees park in those spots. That those spots remain open for people coming to the community center, whether they're visiting the Board of Ed, going to a program at the Park and Rec Department, senior center, whatever the case may be. Now, the Park and Rec employees park on the far side of the building where we've, they've, they have added stairs to those double doors where the portables used to be. So, there is a staircase there and the Park and Rec employees park on that side of the building. The blue area that you see on the very far right side, those are new parking spots and there are eleven parking spots there. So, the Park and Rec Commission would like to see that those eleven spaces, they're fine with the Board of Ed parking in those eleven spaces to the side and to use for whatever purposes, whether it's F R C drop-off, employee parking, whatever the case may be. Any additional space that they would need for employee parking, they would like to see them park in the back parking lot, the, the, the new space in the back. So, that is their recommendation. And they would like to have the council basically put it into a motion so that it can be on record and communicated to the Board of Ed that those are the parking spaces without-
What you're talking about is visitors, those are where most of the Board of Ed is parking now, right?
Correct. Correct.
And they take up most of those spaces every day?
Well, since the, since it's been lined over on the side, I, I have noticed that they're, they are parking-
To the side?
On the side, but they don't utilize all of those. And some of the employees are still parking in front of the building. And they just feel that the taxpayers who are paying the salaries of the town employees and the Board of Ed employees and people that come to the community center should be able to park in front of the building and have access to the building. As in most, you know, like Big Y or Stop and Shop businesses, they don't let their employees park right at the front door. They leave it for their customers and the people that come to frequent the business.
I think Scott was good with that last week. He-
Well, he act, well, he wanted some of, he wanted some additional parking spaces in the front of the building to get his eighteen spaces that he needs. So, he was going to take up some of those spaces there. And the Park and Rec Commission really felt strongly about leaving that whole area in the front there for people who patronize.
So, there's eleven in the blue?
There's eleven in the blue and therefore-
And eighteen.
Yes. Well, that's, that's what he had requested, was eighteen.
F R C, do you have any reaction to this?
Um, Scott had asked for the eighteen, like seven in that side corner over there and the eleven on the side. But, I mean, if he's outnumbered and he's told no, then that's what it is.
Well, I mean, the other issue becomes that if they have, if they have meetings there and they have other district employees come for meetings during the day, if they start parking in that front parking lot there, you're going to lose, you know, the spaces available for people coming to the program.
The majority of people are coming for the Park and Rec, right? So, wouldn't they be wanting to park on the side anyway?
No, because a lot of them enter through the main doors because if they're going into the fitness center or-
Or cafeteria.
Into the, into the cafeteria, they come for lunch or whatever. You know, they're coming for short periods of time or whatever.
Maybe you're calling.
That was, that was their request.
I'd be okay going along with this, but I don't really want to present it to the Board of Ed as a taken or lever proposition. If we adopt this with the understanding that they've got the ability to come back to us and say, well, wait a minute, this doesn't work for us and we may have to revisit it, I'd be more comfortable with that. Because it sounds like this is coming from Park and Rec and Board of Ed hasn't really had a chance to digest it. Just seems a little bit unfair to, to accede to what one group wants and ignore the other. They're both sharing the building. I think they've got to work cooperatively.
They do. And I, I guess that's been part of the bone of contention, that we need-
We're going to tell them all to be big boys and girls.
We, we need to work on that. On both sides, need, need to work on that.
All right.
That issue.
So, that's going to be a motion, play nice.
Is Park and Rec. I guess I'm confused because I would think with the new parking lot, the new area there, a lot of people would be coming on that side door.
They don't, they, they-
They don't.
No, that, that basically-
I thought that's what they wanted at one time, so that ability to be able to-
I think it's a bus drop off.
That's not a handicap entrance over there on the, on the side. Those steps were just added so that it's, it's more for the employees to enter and things like that because the front reception desk is all by the main.
Right, I understand that.
By the main door. So, that is where the, that's where all of the visitors come in. And the side door is basically for the employees. So-
I mean, I think it's going to be confusing when people come, you know, to a, to a meeting, a district meeting for the Board of Ed, never other schools up, they're going to see those spaces in the front, right? I, I don't know. I think this will be difficult.
Shouldn't it really just be first come, first served? I mean, like any other parking lot, I don't, why would we want to get involved in this?
I know, it seems to me, yeah.
I'm just asking.
Well, because it's, because we have a lot of residents and there have been a lot of complaints about where they have to park to use the facility when the employees are taking up the spaces right in front of the doors. So, that, that-
Is your observation that they don't use the eleven spaces before using the other spaces?
I've driven through there the last couple of days since it's been striped and they're not all filled. But there are, there are employees parking right in front of the entrances. So, whether it's just a letter communicating our desire to that, that this is what we would like to work on and if it's a problem, we can readdress it at another timeframe.
Why don't we designate the eleven blue spaces to the Board of Ed, ask them to use those exclusively. And to the extent there is a need for additional space, I'd like to think they could be trusted to not inconvenience other people.
Yeah, without us having to make a, a motion to do that, I mean-
Well, we don't have to make a motion, but I think it needs to be put in, put in writing to them, not necessarily with a motion. We could just say it in a letter.
How about a request?
Yeah, that's fine.
That respects the taxpayers, the people that are coming.
Well, let's designate those eleven spaces for Board of Ed employees. All right. So, they're exclusively for them. And that seems reasonable because that's way down the end.
There's, well, you said there's eighteen employees from the Board of Ed. So, there'd be seven that'd have to apply on the, go any other side.
Well, parking in that back parking lot on the end is no different than where they were parking prior to the new parking lot going in.
Okay.
Because a number of them parked there also. So, it's, it's not like we said, we're saying that they have to go wait to the other end of the building.
I think places are in front of the door, the main door.
I think roughly twenty-six.
Be really honest, we'll just did this and their employees run the chitlakes.
Yeah.
Why don't we just designate twelve for them and the rest, the rest of the-
Well, they have eleven on the, on the side there. So, you want twelve out of the twenty-six?
Yeah. Twelve? No, she said there's a total of eighteen employees, twenty-six, right? So, they have eleven already over here.
Right.
So, there's only seven more.
Exactly.
I'm just bringing it forward from the Park and Rec Commission as to what would the pleasure of the council be? How about just a friendly letter requesting that they respect that?
I kind of lean that way myself.
That's fine.
I feel like too much like a traffic cop and I want to get out, be ripping it out technically.
Do you want to do a traffic cop?
I'll do a memo. I'll need a new patrol car.
All right. Item fourteen. So, there's a statement to petition. Okay. Have a motion to hold executive session.
I'll make a motion to hold executive session.
Second.
Town attorney.
Town manager.
I believe-
Fran Rand.
This is really not, this is not really a case. It's really a non-meeting.
Yeah, we have to go look in the gavel.
We need to get to the bottom of this gavel.
Somebody left me this.
Negotiation, I don't do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Yeah, you wait till people go out.
Big joke.
Don, I second it. Executive session including town attorney, Mike and Fran.
Mike and Fran. Roll call.
Attorney Moore?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
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 That's okay. We got the parking spaces back down.